Casting a secret ballot again, I see. Although Jones received four votes, it's not the majority of the board. You still need five votes to be elected chair.
I would like to reopen nominations. I move to reopen nominations.
A second. Have a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of reopening nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries by voice vote. Nominations are reopened.
I'd like to nominate Sam Barrera.
Are there any further nominations?
I'd nominate James Lawrence.
Are there any further nominations? I have Commissioner Barrera, Commissioner Lawrence, Commissioner Jones, and Commissioner All right, do I have a motion to close the floor for nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The floor is now closed for nominations. Okay, this time, two votes for Marquette, two for Lawrence, two for Jones, two for How would you all like to proceed? Should we vote again?
Should we consider doing away with the secret ballot?
I put a motion forward. We can at least discuss it and then we can vote on it.
A motion to make it a public vote?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I don't, I think that, I don't know that that's, that would make any difference.
Are you seconding the motion?
No.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right. A motion on the floor for discussion? Any discussion?
I'm hoping that it just will move things along.
Sure. Motion to make the vote for chair public. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
We got a roll call.
Roll call? Okay. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Grace? No. Commissioner Marquette?
No.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup?
No.
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Barrera?
Yes.
Okay, I have three yes and five no, so we remain at a secret vote. Are we voting again?
Yes.
Vote, another vote?
Just a little housekeeping reminder, ITs ask that we make sure our mics are on because if not, they can't hear online if we don't have them on.
Exact same vote, two for each. What are we gonna do?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I will drop out.
Okay. Commissioner Lawrence withdraws his name from consideration. That leaves us with Commissioner Barrera, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Marquette.
I too will also drop out.
Okay. Commissioner Barrera withdraws his name. That leaves us with Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Marquette. Okay. Anyone need a slip of paper? Pass them down. Okay, we finally have a chair with six votes. Commissioner Jones is elected chair.
All right, next on our list, I'm gonna open the floor for the election of vice chair, and I nominate Jim Lawrence to be vice chair.
I nominate Roseanne Marquette for vice chair.
I nominate Sam Barrera.
Any other nominations?
I move that nominations be closed.
Second.
All right, motion on the floor and support. Any other discussion? Nominations are closed. Cast your vote. Monica, do you want me to? This, oh, this is roll call. You're right. You're right. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I forgot.
Ready for roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Grace.
Roseanne.
Commissioner Marquette. Commissioner Langley. Commissioner Northrup. Commissioner Lawrence.
Jim.
Chair Jones.
Jim Lawrence.
Commissioner Barrera. And Commissioner Lee.
Sam Barrera.
Okay. I have five votes for Commissioner Lawrence. Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
That is done. All right, next on our list, we have a public comment. This public comment is for agenda items only. You have three minutes. The floor isn't open for public comment. Floor is not closed for public comment. We have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to, as part of the consent agenda, I would like to remove the Van Buren Cass District Board of Health appointment and move it to under new business, which will make it M-10-25, and that would be an emotion to appoint Priscilla Gaddis to the Cass Van Buren Health Board.
So you're moving the M6-25? Just the one item?
Just the one item, yes.
Can we break that apart? Do we have to bring the whole?
And change the nominee, yes.
She just moved that portion, that one piece, and made it a motion in itself. And it's M12-2025.
The 10 is right down at the bottom. It's the closed session.
I have a question regarding the other items that are under that bullet point. Particularly, are we allowed to discuss right now or are we just, do we have a motion on the floor?
Well, we have a mo, we have a motion on the floor, yes.
Oh, we do have a motion. Well, has it been supported?
No, you just moved it, so we don't need a motion on the floor from that. It's moved automatically.
Okay.
So if you wanna discuss it, you can just move it to new business and then we discuss it at that point.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move that we put item four, M6-2025, under new business.
The whole thing?
Yep.
The whole thing?
Please.
Oh, okay.
Because you only moved a portion of it.
I only moved one.
So now the whole thing is.
Now we moved the whole thing.
Got it.
I'll discuss a little more once, once we get there.
Okay. I will too.
All right. Two different ones. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We're good. All right. Any, anybody else? I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion on the floor and support. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's approved. No recognitions, no presentations? The whole consent agenda, not just that one. So we need a, the vice chair.
I so move that we cast a one-time vote for this consent agenda.
Second. Motion on the floor and support. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Do we need roll call for that one? Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Grace?
Yes.
Commissioner Barrera?
Yes.
Commissioner Marquette?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner reports. District one, Commissioner Langley. That would be amazing if it was. Commissioner Lawrence?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Northrup? District four, I'll take this opportunity, there's nothing going on in the district, but for my commissioner report, I was approached by members of the Cass County Medical Care Facility, and there was a, I don't know, discrimination case is the right word, but maybe allegations, so with me being me, and everybody here knows me, I went straight to the source during one of the meetings, and I asked the interim director or administrator, are there any issues? You know, is this the case? I heard you're trying to get rid of all the black people, you know? I asked him straight up. So he said no, and he told me his plan, and from there, I attended the meeting, I talked to the other two people, I've just learned now that that interim administrator is now gone, and I've spoken with the new administrator and voiced the concerns of the employees there. And that person has assured me that they have a plan in place to where there will be no discrimination, and there'll be an ongoing investigation, and if there is, it'll be brought to light. And that's what my job is now, is to bring that to light to make sure it does get rectified, just in case there is. Because this is 2025, and there's no room in the world for that, which we all, realistic, is still there, but not in my county. You know, so I've done my diligence to bring that to light, and as chair of the board, I will continue to pursue it, but I have the utmost respect and, and I'm, and I know the abilities of the person in there now that she's gonna do the right thing. So that's all I have for District four. District five, Commissioner Grace.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Barrera.
Just wanna give everyone a heads up again that Just wanna give everyone a heads up again, uh, that light is gonna be going up here at US 12 in Gumwood. Uh, they installed them, but they have covers over them, so just wanna make sure everyone's being careful, once those are up and operational, please take, uh, time to go through there safely, and just be careful out there.
Thank you. Commissioner Marquetti.
Yes, I have a very short, um, the Edwardsburg Food Pantry delivered its Christmas bags, it delivered, um, the, the people who pulled up and got put in their car, turkey, ham, toys, towel sets, blankets, and they, and if they had children, they could come inside, and we had the toys all grouped out, uh, for the certain ages. As a rule, um, there are things left over, but this year, everything was given out. The next project will be, um, the Food Pantry's annual fundraiser, which goes from Ash Wednesday through Easter. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee.
I don't have anything at this time.
Administrator's report. Interim Administrator Rintrow.
It's in the packet.
Anybody have any questions for the administrator? County Partners. Do we have any out there? There she is. Yes ma'am, you have the floor. You can come up to the front and, uh, give the audience your name and push the button right there, the long button. Yep. There you go.
Um, my name is Mercedes Shariba, and I am the new Executive Director of the Medical Care Facility, so I wanted to take a moment just to introduce myself. Um, I know a few of the faces, but some of you I have never met, so I'm pleased to be here, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. And I have the utmost confidence that things will go well at the Medical Care Facility under her leadership. I know her and her whole family, and they are excellent people. Good human beings. All right, anybody else, County Partners? Dave? You know I call you a County Partner. All right. Victor Fitz. You have the floor. Gotta push the button.
Wanna congratulate, congratulate each of you for being re-elected, or being elected as, as Commissioners, also in particular Chairman Jones for the Chair, and Vice Chair Lawrence for the Vice Chair. Look forward to working with all of you here in the next year. Would indicate that unfortunately, the year 2025 opened up, uh, in a, with literally a, a bang. Uh, the first weekend of the year, we had a significant series shooting that occurred here in the county. Uh, two individuals have been charged with multiple counts, uh, including thirty-year felonies, uh, and we'll see where that goes, obviously, I can't comment on, um, much more details on that, but again, certainly we will continue to do our job to protect the public as we go forward in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sheriff Roach.
I'll be real quick, um, I'll save mine for next week, um, just wanna say congratulations to all of you, and welcome, and I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Does it feel weird? Judge Beeler.
He'll get used to it soon. I used to look around, like, for the first few months when anybody would say Judge, and look for Sue Dobrich, and then I'd be like, oh, they're talking to me, so. Anyway, congratulations to all of you. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, we're really excited to have our interim administrator, and we feel she's gonna be very easy to work with. Jennifer knows a lot about the county, and so, um, she's already been very responsive in all the communications I've had with her, so I just wanted to make you aware of that, because I know that it was unpopular a few years ago, when some of us were complaining about communication problems, and I like to, you know, be sure to shine light on positive things, and so she's doing a really good job of being responsive. I hope that when you all decide how you're gonna move forward on, uh, a replacement administrator, that there's posting and transparency, because I, for one, for the courts, we receive a lot of federal grants, and it's really important to me that the equal opportunity employment is actually followed, um, so that we get the word out there that we are hiring for an administrator. That's not to say I don't know who will apply, but it's just important that we get the word out there, because if we say it's important in our county that everybody has a fair opportunity to be considered, regardless of race, age, et cetera, then we have to have postings and make it known that we're looking for somebody, and not just hire internally, which that's nothing against, if Jennifer decides to apply internally, that's perfectly fine with me, I'm not saying that, but because for our grants and everything, I always check the box that we are an equal opportunity employer, I'm hoping that we will be, because that's part of it, posting the job and making sure that there's an interview process, et cetera. So, I just wanted to give my two cents worth about that, because I like to be honest when I'm communicating with the federal government about all the grants I receive, and since we're gonna be probably doing some hiring, I think it's important for us to do that, so, look forward to the coming year, and, um, I think we're off to a good start.
Before you leave, ma'am, before you leave, uh, Commissioner Lawrence and I, that's gonna be our number one priority, starting first thing tomorrow, and my idea for that is, we talked about before, we're gonna have a committee to decide how we're gonna hire, but to unite the Board and the elected officials, I would like to allow you all, not allow, that's the wrong word, I would like to ask you all for one of, a person of your choice to be on that committee, so we can make that decision together, that way you can't be no more transparent than that.
That sounds wonderful to me, but I only speak for me.
Yeah, so I will reach out to all the elected officials and see which one step in.
Okay, sounds good. We'll, uh, see who draws the short straw on that.
Right, right. Is Hope here? She stepped out. Oh yeah. Monica? Okay. Mr. Drain Commissioner. Everything's froze. All right. All right, new business, we have, uh, first thing, we have M nine dash twenty, twenty twenty-five, motion approved at 2025 Board of Commissioners' meeting schedule.
I move to approve the 2025 Board of Commissioners' meeting schedule.
Second.
Motion on the floor and support. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Looking at the schedule, I, I see a couple conflicts coming up with this schedule. July 3rd is a meeting date that, before, that's one of them, and then I'm, my, my schedule here, I got a couple typo errors, I'm concerned with, I have two meetings set for August 14th, if you look at that schedule. And that's my concern with the July 3rd one.
Well, while we're discussing it, couldn't we just take that July 3rd one and move it to the very next week? We can do that now, we can vote on that now. We can amend that, and then with the, what's the other dates?
The one on my schedule just says August 14th for the cow and the regular meeting, is that basically true?
I wonder if that's due to Fair Week. We've, we've started, uh, doing away with the meeting Fair Week, so possibly we were gonna have a committee of the whole and a Board of Commissioners meeting back-to-back? Just a guess, I think, I see head shaking, yes.
That could work, cause we would be doing our business meeting first, and then we would be following up with the committee of the whole.
Yeah, so that would work, that way when we skip for the Fair, Fair Week, we never have a meeting scheduled during that time. That would work out. So would you, who will, who will move to approve the, uh, you wanna amend it to change it from July 3rd?
If we.
Anyone can amend it if they want to.
Move to 3rd, if, if we moved it back a week, it would be the 10th.
The 10th of July?
Do we have, we have a meeting next Thursday?
Yes.
Would it be possible to move that to the following Thursday? Cause I talked to Jennifer about it, didn't, wouldn't that make sense? Since it's an extra Thursday.
We do have an extra week, so instead of having back-to-back, you could do that and still have a week in between if you wanted to do that.
So you can amend.
It would give a little bit more time for things to come on the agenda, we don't have too much so far slated.
Twenty-third, I'm good with that too.
I'll make that motion.
Don't forget to push your buttons. Cause people, we're not worried about people in here not hearing us, it's the people on YouTube and on the broadcast that don't hear us if we don't have our mics pushed.
Jeremiah, could you please restate what the amendment is?
The amendment is, instead of July 3rd, it will be the 10th, and instead of.
The 16th, next week, it'll be Thursday, January 23rd.
August, yeah, January 23rd, yeah, January 23rd, yeah. We need a support for that. There was support? All right. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Now, any other discussion for that? Glad I have RJ here. Yeah. All right. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Now the motion passes. All right, M 11 dash 20 25, motion approved to purchase of a new K-9 vehicle and a necessary budget adjustment through the CDEP fund. Yes, sir, please. No, we did, we did two of them. Hold on, Sheriff, we're pausing. All right. Does anybody have, uh, any questions for the Sheriff? K-9 was just here.
He was here, I was gonna introduce him, but I didn't know how long we were gonna be, so.
Right, right.
He's on his day off, and I didn't wanna keep him, so I'll bring him back next time and introduce him again.
But we need that vehicle, and it comes out of the CDEP fund.
Current K-9 car is, uh, 2016, um, it's got 185,000 miles on it, and then I don't have any more Band-Aids to put on it, so, um, we're in, we're in need of this car, yes.
Uh, Unit 15, the Tahoe?
That is Unit 9, that is Deputy Nevin's car, which he is retiring at the end of this month, so we retire his car with him, we hope.
Right, right, that'd be cool, yeah.
I move the purchase of the new vehicle for the K-9.
Support. Motion on the floor and support. Any other discussion? It's coming out of CDEP fund, so that's good. Any, uh, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, public comment. Nope, new business. New business. We're moving, which one are we gonna do first? The one that Commissioner Marquetti, that was first. So ma'am, ma'am, you have the floor.
Okay, so, um, and I do appreciate getting the applications, um, in with our packet, and when I looked at the, um, application for, um, uh, Priscilla Gaddis, Gaddis, I believe that's how you pronounce her name, I looked at her credentials, and I thought, wow, um, this would be an excellent person to put on the, um, Board of Health, in that she is in charge of, um, the Board of Health for the Bo-Kagans, and I felt that that would help us achieve some partnerships there.
Have you talked to the other members of the Board?
Of the Board of Health?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I have not.
Well, that's, that's your motion, I mean, I don't have any other discussion for it. So there's a motion on the floor.
Do we clarify the motion?
Yeah.
She was gonna take Vicky Vaughn off and, and add.
Priscilla Gaddis.
I don't think there was actually a motion made yet, we just had discussion.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna make that motion then, thank you.
All right, motion on the floor and support. So this, the motion is to.
To appoint.
To appoint.
Priscilla Gaddis to the, uh, Cass Van Buren Board of Health.
And take Vicky Vaughn off. All right. I'd like to ask for a roll call vote for that, please. Yes, push your button. Yes. All right, it'll be all right.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yeah, no.
Commissioner Barrera?
No.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Grace?
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti?
Yes.
And Commissioner Langley?
No.
I have five yes and three no.
All right. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yep. And the next one, our next motion would be the whole consent agenda as a whole. Motion M, yeah. Yeah, number four.
M dash 12.
M dash six, 20 25.
So the reason I pulled that out under new business, um, is, I'll try to keep this short, but in the big picture of everything, the way that we appoint people to committees has been a, kind of a concern for me. The long story short of it, um, I would like to see applications go from our Administrator's office directly to those committees, and those said committees that would vote, bring that recommendation forward to us, as of right now, the way the process works, applications get funneled from the Administrator's office, I believe, to the appointment, goes to the Appointments Committee, the Appointment Committee then decides, um, what to bring forward to the Board. There may be some oversight, there's may be some issues with that process, because we may not be seeing all the talent that's coming in, and in my perspective, from my experience, working on the Economic Development Committee, for example, we're trying to stack that committee with certain talent that we want to, basically, we know the goals that we've set forth, and we know the talent that we're looking for. I think it's the responsibility of that committee to have a say in the members that are gonna be joining on, because they're collectively working together. That being said, um, anything that hasn't been brought forth to those individual committees, I'd like to table those, to have those committees have the opportunity to review those applications, make a recommendation to bring back to the Board for a vote.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the Board of Public Works, uh, James Dunn and, James Dodd and Joe Sylvia, uh, we have a meeting coming up, um, because as I mentioned, um, last month, uh, we have a sewer project with Bangston Lake and Porter Township, uh, in Van Buren County, and if we don't have James Dunn and Joe Sylvia, we do not have a quorum.
Zambro, Ambroja, get it? I wanna ask you, that one, we know the, the dates and the times of the meeting.
Yeah, so when we're third, each one must be sure, because, um, when you receive applications, we do actually send the applications to the, the committee, so that the Chair of the Board of Committee that exists gets every application we receive. So for example, if we receive a Board of Public Works application, the Board of Public Works Chair gets it, we ask them to share their thoughts with the Chair of the Appointments Committee, which was previously Chair Jones, and then Chair Jones takes any feedback he gets back to the committee. So there is some workflow, but not an official vote, like you were asking for.
You're saying the Chair of the committee reviews it? I was unaware of that.
Yep, every time we receive an application, the Chair of that Board receives the application. We forward it to them, and then ask them to share any feedback they may have. Um, there are several committees and boards that will be meeting soon, that will be in the same position that Commissioner Marquetti.
That's what I was gonna ask you, cause you know.
Yeah, I, I've never shared in that experience, knowing that even some of those committees that I served on, that there, there was any of that, so, just, I, I think from my perspective, it would make sense that the rest of the members of those committees have a say.
The whole Board.
Ultimately, the Board of Commissioners will have the final say, but I just think it helps having that support from those committees.
And I think the Parks and Recreation is gonna be the next one that's up for, and that won't have a quorum, cause yesterday we had a Health Department meeting canceled cause we didn't have a quorum, cause we didn't have any, um, what do you wanna do, Commissioner Barrera?
My goal isn't to, to make this difficult, or to not, I, I wasn't aware that the other committees didn't have a quorum, so that kinda does throw a wrench in the mix. I'd like to revisit this process in the future, see if there's any way that we could sharpen our pencil on this.
Do that. So, is that a motion to approve the appointments of Boards and Commissions for now, and follow-up later on?
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'd like to amend that and just remove the one particularly for the Economic Development Committee because I know that we want to take a look at those applications. We only have a few seats left and we want to make sure, um, they align with our goals.
So he's a, he moved to amend the motion. Yes, yes, we need a second or not.
Second.
We have motion on the floor in support for an amendment. Any other discussion on that? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Now we're going to vote on the motion as amended. Correct?
And to clarify, we voted yes to remove the Economic Development.
Yes.
Yes.
And all the rest of them are going to go forth so they'll have a quo, a quorum. You got it? Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Think that's it. Now we're on the public comment. Public comments limit three people, it's for anything not on the agenda. Yes, ma'am. You can come on up, state your name and, uh, you've got three minutes.
Hi, Mary.
Hello, can you hear me? Um, I just wanted to say that, uh, my mother, uh, was actually awarded a couple of awards by the Daughters of American Revolution. And, um, it was the Women in History Award and the Conservation Award. And, um, I wondered if there was a, and also this is, if you're not aware, this is the book that we wrote together, so. And this is what kind of inspired them to give her an award because she was actually a member of the DAR. But, um, when they got wind of this, they realized, um, they had to give her these awards, so, um, but it's available on Amazon, um, and I wanted to put something on maybe the government, some sort of a posting on the site. I don't know how to, because you can't like post on the Facebook, the Facebook, um.
Well, just send that, send that to, uh, our, it's to Ambrosia and then she'll give it to the rest of the board where we can review it and make sure it's something that we can put on our.
Okay.
And then we can make a decision from there, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just want to share that.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else?
Good evening, Ron Butts, Animal Control Director. Um, just want to advise the board that we have, uh, two upcoming rabies vaccination clinics. Uh, the first one will be held on January twenty-fifth, uh, Saturday from nine to one. And then we'll have a second clinic in February on the fifteenth, um, also Saturday, same timeframe, nine to one. Um, vaccination costs are twenty-five dollars apiece. Um, it's open to anybody. Um, we're not excluding, um, out, out of county residents just because of the importance of vaccinating your pets, keeping them healthy and, and controlling disease population. Um, and we'll also be selling Cass County dog licenses that day as well too, because we are in the season now for the twenty twenty-five dog license sales. Um, and also we have a number of veterinarians that are selling dog licenses for us in the county as well, so.
That's into it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. That is great news.
Anybody else? Floor is not closed for public comment. Hope, but we have the, can we do that? All right, we need somebody to bring us into closed session because we, we're on a timeline.
I move to enter closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen two, that, two sixty-eight E and to include Clerk Register McMichael, Treasurer, Treasurer Anderson, Interim Administrator, Finance Director Repro, Attorney Nick Spiegel, and any other person as designated by the board chair.
Support.
Motion on the floor in support. Roll call, yep?
Now it's working.
Hold on, we got Mike needs a.
Mr. Chairman, why are we going in closed session? Should it be stated why we're going into closed session?
MCL fifteen point two six eight E, um, I believe it's to consider information exempt from public disclosure and to consult with the attorney.
Okay, thank you.
And we're doing that here, hope, or over there? Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Northrup.
Yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrera.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.